Everyone, my name is Scott Halopka. I'm Chair of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program. I'd like to get started by doing a roll call, but before we do that, we have a new board member. And if you could introduce him.
Happy to do that. I would like to introduce our new planning board member, George Fortis. He's a county resident and a business owner from Perry Hall. Appointed to serve as an at-large member from the county executive. Welcome, Mr. Fortis. And also, everybody remember, if you're not talking, turn off your mics because of background noise. Thank you. Welcome, George. Do you want to say a couple of words, George?
It's good to be here. Thank you for having me. I look forward to helping out and doing whatever I can going forward.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll do a roll call now of the other members. Start with Mr. Is it Fortis?
Yes.
So for everyone else, you know, please respond by saying aye, Mr. Schweitzer. Are you there? I see him.
Here. I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm here.
Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Caligari.
Here.
Ms. Hatford, you've already heard. Ms. Wilkman.
Here.
Mr. McGinnis on. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Heinle said he might be running a little late. Mr. Perlo. Not seeing. Mr. Warren.
Here. Aye.
Thank you. And I think that doesn't. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear recommendations from the Department of Planning staff. After their presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions. Note that there are members of the community and attendants of tonight's meeting. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The planning board held a citizen input meeting on October 15th of 2020, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement program. I'd now like to invite staff from the Department of Planning to begin their presentation. Everyone else, please mute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Meacham, and I'm with the Planning Department. Tonight, the planning staff is going to review the capital budget for fiscal year '22 and the capital program for fiscal year '23 through '27. Staff has worked with the agencies to review the department budgets and will give a brief overview of each department's program. After the department programs have been reviewed, we'll start an open discussion and a vote on staff recommendations will be made by the subcommittee. Chris Weaver was going to begin with Department 201 Sewer Systems, but I think he's having a hard time getting on. So I'm gonna share my screen and we'll skip to the other departments and then we'll come back to Chris's department once he gets on. So we're going to start with Department 205 Streets and Highways, and this is with Chris David.
Okay, good evening. For Department 205 Streets and Highways, DPW has requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for fiscal year 2022 through 2027 as proposed in the previous CIP. The department staff agrees with the request. And some active projects which are being requested for funding include the Campbell Bullet Varred Extension, as was mentioned in their presentation, and additional funding for similar projects on Rolling Road, Ingleside Avenue, and Kenwood Avenue are proposed for the upcoming budget and CIP. In regards to the citizen input meeting, at the meeting, roadway were servicing and sidewalk improvements in the 400 to 800 block area of Ingleside Avenue were requested by a citizen group. DPW has addressed this request from the citizen group and has added that a future project, including the requested area of Ingleside Avenue, will be included in a roadway rehabilitation project to facilitate the requested changes, including pedestrian sidewalk improvements and widening. In addition, another citizen group has requested pedestrian improvements along Bologna Avenue to improve connectivity and mitigate adverse conditions for pedestrians. DPW commented on this request that Bologna Avenue in the requested area is an abandoned paper street and therefore cannot be extended or widened at this time as it's not practical. Moving on to sustainability, DPW has put forth that its roadway improvement projects proposed for the CIP and upcoming budget will help to reduce vehicle emissions and provide multimodal transportation options. And this is including on the projects mentioned beforehand. So therefore, staff recommends that the planning board adopt the requested fiscal year 2022 budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year 2023 through 2027 for streets and highways.
Chris Weaver is in now, so I'm going to go back to his department. He's on the, he called in.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute you, Chris. You should be the... Chris, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Sorry about technical difficulties off. I'm presenting on the Department 201, 203, and 204. We'll start with sewer system. For the sewer system, DPW has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year for FY 2022 through 2027 as requested in last year's budget. Significant active projects are the gunpowder relief sewer improvements, the gunpowder pumping station, the white pumping station improvements, Tackeville, Turkey Point, Dundalk, and Fort Howard pumping station upgrades. And significant future projects in the pipeline are Perry Hall Manor Sewer Extension and the Red House Run Structural Sewer Rehabilitations Phase 1 and 2. For the citizen input meeting, there were no citizen comments related to sanitary infrastructure. And regarding sustainability, construction of additional pipelines minimizes the potential for sewer overflows during heavy rainfall and protects the community and the environment. More efficient and reliable equipment is installed in the upgraded pumping stations to improve their reliability and resilience. And backup power at each station will reduce the potential for station overflows from loss of power. In addition, native plants are installed to mitigate the impacts of sewer construction projects. Our recommendation is that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for the sewer system. For the water system, DPW has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year for FY 2022 through '27 as requested in last year's budget. Significant active projects are the Druid Lake, Ashburton, and Guilford Finnish Water Covered Reservoirs, the Montebello Water Treatment Plant improvements, the Cromwell Pumping Station improvements, and significant future projects are the Towson Fort Zone Water Main Replacement and the First Zone Water Main's replacement and renovations. Also coming is the new Fullerton Filtration Plant. From the meeting, the water section did not receive any citizen comments. Regarding sustainability, pipes are installed below the frost line to limit their exposure to extreme temperature changes. Water main replacements reduce the likelihood of main breaks which can cause localized flooding. Water storage facilities provide equalization, emergency storage, and fire protection. And water treatment plant improvements will help meet future water quality standards. Our recommendation is that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for the water system. For storm drains, DPW has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year FY 22 through '27 as requested in last year's budget. Significant projects are the Hilton Avenue Storm Drain Extension, and I'll come back to that in a second. Bologna Division and Melankin Storm Drain Extensions, the Kingston Road Storm Drain Replacement. Drainage and upcoming study is the Drainage Infrastructure Assessment and Condition Mapping and also the Climate Action Plan. From the citizen input meeting, there were several flooding issues that were brought to our attention. Park Grove Avenue Storm Drains, this is the Hilton Avenue Extension that I mentioned above. The plan is to accelerate projects '24 to 2022, so that would move that project up two years. The other citizen input meeting requests were the Bay Drive Flooding in Bullies Quarters, Ola Stormwater runoff, and that's Ola Avenue and Lily's Lane, the Ingleside Avenue Flooding in Catonsville, and the Summit Park Stormwater Containment in Catonsville. DPW says these requests are to improve drainage systems beyond what they have planned. Site meetings are going to be necessary to determine precisely what the community is requesting, and there are currently no funding commitments for these requests. Regarding sustainability, storm drain projects are designed to convey stormwater during intense storms. This will reduce flooding and make communities more resilient to the effects of these storms. And the Climate Action Plan will predict the impacts of climate change and identify those areas most likely to be affected by it. Our recommendation is that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for storm drains.
Brooks, you're next with 207.
Hi, this is Brooks Phelps, Department 207 Bridges, Culverts, and Grade Separations. Bridges has requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for fiscal year 2022, and we agree with this request. Some bridges currently under construction include Stablersville Road over the Third Mine Branch, South Rule Road over Little Falls, and Patterson Road over the Tributary to Long Green Pike. DPW has also recently completed the River Road Bridge. There were no CIM comments made or comments made at CIM regarding projects that are funded by the community this particular department. As for resiliency and sustainability, the funding for the Bridges CIP enables the county to become more sustainable by reducing longer traffic trips by providing more direct routes, including the Stablersville Road and South Rule Road Bridges. And the staff recommends that the planning board adopt the requested fiscal year 2022 capital improvement program for Bridges, Culverts, and Grade Separations. For Department 208, for Refuge Disposal Systems, Refuge has requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for fiscal year 2022. We also agree with this request. A recently completed project for them was the Hermwood Landfill, which had its water treatment system replaced to better manage leachate. Funds are also planned for the next cell preparation and excavation at the Eastern Sanitary Landfill. But on the other hand, Refuge is between major capital projects at the moment. There are also no comments made at CIM regarding projects that are funded by Refuge Disposal Systems. As for resiliency and sustainability, the funding for the Refuge CIP enables the county to become more sustainable by managing landfill leachate to improve water quality and converting methane into energy. Refuge improvement also helps to treat groundwater and improve the water supply. Planning staff also recommends that the planning board adopt the requested fiscal year 2022 budget and capital improvement program for Refuge Disposal Systems.
Chris, you're next with Community Colleges. Chris, can you unmute him?
Yes, I'm here. For Community Colleges, CCBC has requested the same overall amount of county funds as last year for FY '22, '24, and '26. The funds have moved between some of these projects to fund their higher priorities. CCBC also shows state funds spread out over all years rather than just even years to better match when the funding is going to be required. Some significant active projects they have going on are the Dundalk Maintenance Building Edition, the Essex Mathematics and Science Hall Roof Replacement. And some significant future projects are the Essex Stormwater Management Roof Replacements for both Catonsville Health Careers and Technology Building and the Essex Administration Building, the Catonsville Student Services Center renovations, Dundalk Student Services Center renovations, and the Essex Wellness and Athletics Center. They also want to replace the second underground piping loop at Essex. From the citizen input meeting, there was no direct comments or questions for CCBC. Regarding sustainability efforts, solar panel installations on all main campuses provide about a quarter of CCBC's electricity. Three lead silver buildings and one potentially gold and silver building pending certification are on the campuses. There's also free shuttle bus service between campuses, hybrid and electric fleet vehicles, and a green parking program. We recommend that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for community colleges.
Okay, moving on to Department 210. For General Government Buildings, property management has requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for fiscal '22 through '27 as proposed in the previous CIP. Staff agrees with this request. Some active and future projects which are being considered for funding in this capital budget and program include the Woodlawn Health and Wick Center, in which those two facilities are being combined into one. And construction will be completed on the project in May 2021. In addition to the Woodlawn and Jacksonfield Senior Centers, which were requested as a part of the last CIP and are currently in the study phases to examine feasibility and respond to the community requests. Included in the General Government Buildings umbrella is the Office of Information Technology, and they are currently in a project which will be continued into fiscal year 2022 to expand broadband fiber throughout the county at various locations. At the citizen input meeting, there were no questions or comments regarding general government buildings. In regards to sustainability, there are multiple projects in the works, including generator replacements at several county facilities, including the Dundalk Fire Station, the Franklin Police Precinct, and the Back River Medic Unit. These improvements will replace aging equipment and will be replaced with modern and more efficient energy equipment to ensure power during outages. In addition, OIT has completed projects to remove the county's programs for employees in the light of the COVID-19 pandemic to transition most employees to a telework situation and has transitioned paper documents into digital scans to move away from the total use of paper documents. Then staff recommends that the planning board adopt the requested fiscal year 2022 budget and capital improvement program for general government buildings.
For Department 212, Parks Preservation and Greenways has an increased budget by a total of $19.545 million in the six-year program, with an increase in approximately $3 million in fiscal year '22, $8 million in fiscal year '24, and $8.5 million in fiscal year '26. Here's the breakdown of the appropriation and source of funds. So the majority of the increase in appropriations can be found in Project 307 Park Development and Project 601 Park Acquisition. Some small decreases can be found in Project 301 Rec Facility Field Renovation and Project 302 Athletic Field Construction. Some upcoming projects in Project 307 are Sparrows Point Park Site, Middle River Merzdel Pal Centers, a master plan for Rec and Parks, Oregon Ridge Park Renovation, and Local Park Enhancement. Some upcoming acquisitions in 601 include the Bearman Property and Honey Goat and the Civic Property in Towson. So for the source of funds, the program Open Space and Local Open Space waiver fees are anticipated to increase by approximately $15.2 million in the out years. These out year numbers are rough predictions of funds. Both sources are highly dependent on the real estate market and the economy. Better predictions can be made as the out years get closer. The source of funds called "other" includes funds from corporate donations, HUD developments, and other unexpected revenue. Rec and Parks anticipates a corporate donation from TPA for the Sparrows Point Park designation, the design and construction, and other revenue totaling $3.6 million in the six-year program. New donations are anticipated for fiscal year '22, '24, and '26 totaling $700,000 in new revenue. Donations come from local rec council commitments and other groups. Some commitments have already been made for fiscal year '22, including commitments by the Ravens to donate for a destination playground in Owings Mill. At the CIM, a citizen spoke about the need for repairs and upgrades to the Diamond Ridge Park Site. Rec and Parks commented that they anticipate funding in fiscal year '22 as one of the local park comprehensive enhancement program jobs proposed within Project 307. The design phase would probably begin this fall. No real idea on estimated cost or the full extent of the job at this time. We recommend accepting the budget as proposed for Parks Preservation and Greenways.
All right, for schools, Department 20... Hold on a second, I can talk. Department 213 Schools, BCPS has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year for FY '23 through FY '27 as requested in last year's budget. So the overall FY '22 budget of $200 million has not changed. Some of the FY '22 project amounts have changed with the revised BCPS priority list, which they outlined in their presentation. The Schools for Our Future Program renovation and construction plan has showed a total of over $1.6 billion. The priorities 1 through 14 in the BCPS priority list are the remaining projects that will complete the Schools for Our Future Program. This is a mouthful. The multi-year improvement plan for all schools study began in April 2020 and produced its Phase 1 high school recommendations in fall 2020. The estimate is that $1.2 billion will be needed for high schools, which make up about one-third of the system's building square footage. Phase 2 for the elementary schools and middle schools, recommendations are expected in the summer of 2021. This is the remaining two-thirds of the building square footage in this system. The funding needed for that is still to be determined. There is a chance that the MYI Pass Phase 2 could change the BCP's priorities just as Phase 1 did. Also of note, requests for replacement of Towson High School and Delaney High School are Board of Ed requests which are in disagreement with the MYI Pass recommendation. Planning recommends to deal with this, that some of the FY '22 funding for Towson High School be used to reconsider whether to renovate or rebuild school. From the citizen input meeting, no comments were made directed toward BCPS. And regarding sustainability, new and replacement schools meet or exceed LEED Silver Certifications. Projects comply with all state and local environmental regulations. The schools are community-centered, multipurpose facilities rather than just schools. The recommendation is that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for schools.
For Department 217 Land Preservation, they have requested the same source of funds and funding amounts for fiscal year '22 through '27 as was requested in last year's budget. Some things of note in the land preservation budget request, funds increased in the out years as promised by the county executive in last year's budget. In fiscal year '21, 264 acres have been preserved thus far using the Ag Press Fund and a match from the state for the Mount Easement. There are an additional 580 acres pending closing. In the coming years, the department plans to preserve 520 acres per year with Mount. County Ag anticipates 150 acres in fiscal year '22, 400 acres in fiscal year '24, and 500 acres in fiscal year '26. With Rural Legacy, they're estimated to preserve 150 acres per year. We recommend accepting the budget as proposed for land preservation. For Department 218 Community Improvement, they have requested the same source of funds and funding amounts for fiscal year '22 through '27 as was requested in last year's budget. Some things of note in community improvement budget is that there is a $1 million in construction money for the Dundalk Heritage Trail, which is scheduled for fiscal year '22. The Towson Road Project will continue to be funded with general funds money in fiscal year '22 and '23. The county's efforts to increase affordable housing units to meet the goals of the HUD Affordable Housing Voluntary Compliance Agreement will be funded at the same levels as previous CIPs. For the citizen input meeting, there were no comments made at the CIM regarding projects that are funded by the community improvement CIP budget. Ballmer County seeks to build on the strength of our county's character and vibrancy by being effective government stewards of resiliency, health, and cohesive neighborhoods. The funding from the community improvement CIP enables the county to make neighborhoods more resilient. We recommend accepting the budget as proposed.
For Department 220, the Fire Department Buildings, they have requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for fiscal year 2022 and the following CIP. Staff agrees with this request. Their CIP and budget covers a couple of projects, including the Westview Fire Station, in which the women's locker rooms are being renovated. And it's, that project is currently in design and will be moving into construction during fiscal year 2022. And then for all fire stations throughout the county, they are all being installed with extractor and dryer equipment. This project is being implemented in three phases, and the first phase is scheduled to be completed in December of 2021. Those Phase 2 installations will begin in fiscal year of 2022. At the CIM, there were no community comments related to Fire Department Buildings. In regards to sustainability and resiliency, generator replacements are being installed at several county fire stations, including Dundalk, Edsmere, and Perry Hall. The current aging equipment will be replaced with modern, more energy-efficient equipment that will ensure power during outages. Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the requested fiscal year 2022 budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year 2023 through '27 for Fire Department Buildings.
For Department 221, the Waterway Improvement Fund, the Waterway Improvement Fund has requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for this year's CIP. The focus of the Waterway Improvement Funding Projects included a variety of stream restoration projects, shoreline stabilization and protection projects, stormwater facility maintenance and best management practices, as well as reforestation. During the CIM, there were no direct comments related to the Waterway Improvement Fund regarding sustainability. All Waterway Improvement Fund projects provide water quality and habitat improvements, as well as stormwater runoff, storage, and treatment. These types of water quality improvements capture and/or prevent excessive sediments and nutrients. and nutrients by treating and slowly releasing uncontrolled stormwater and stabilized stream banks and channels and tidal shorelines, all of which are necessary to sustain stable natural systems and processes for public drinking water purposes and ecological function. And but implementation of these products are important to comply and meet pollutant reduction goals with the state and federal governments. Wrapping up, staff recommends that the planning board accept the Waterway Improvement Fund request as submitted.
And moving on to Department two thirty, for the police department. The police department has requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for fiscal year twenty twenty two through twenty twenty seven as proposed in the previous C I P. And staff agrees with this request. Their active projects includes the Wilkins Precinct Replacement, which is currently in the design phase to identify land and design a floor plan for the new precinct building in which six million dollars is requested for fiscal year twenty twenty two. In addition, there is also the project to replace the police pistol range, mechanical target, and bullet trap. This project is currently underway to install a new indoor mechanical target system and bullet trap, which includes approximately one million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty two to deal with deteriorating conditions at the range and maintain safety and improvement for the police staffers and officers. There were no community input comments left at the C I M regarding police department buildings. In regards to sustainability, the Wilkins Precinct Replacement Project intends to achieve a LEED Silver Green Certification. In addition, the Cockeysville Precinct is currently undergoing renovation in which it will replace old equipment and resolve airflow issues, which will reduce energy use and increase customer satisfaction. Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the requested fiscal year twenty twenty two budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty twenty three through twenty twenty seven for police department buildings.
In conclusion, the fiscal year twenty two through twenty seven C I P program has remained unchanged since last year's proposed program in all departments, except for Parks Preservation and Greenways, which has increased by nineteen point five four five million in the six year program, and Community Colleges, which has increased by one point one one zero million for the six year program. That concludes the planning staff presentation. You may begin your open discussion.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, for their presentation. Do we have any questions, comments from any of the?
I have a couple. I start with the sewer issue in Catonsville. I appreciate that the roads were going to get fixed with the curbing, but we've had substantial flooding in that area several times. Eloquent City gets more press, but we've had similar flooding with floods running down Frederick Boulevard. Is there, is that something that is going to be in the budget? I guess I misunderstood or did not understand how it was talked about, but I didn't get a clear understanding of what the process would be there.
Give me a second, Mr. Warren, I'm trying to find my agency template.
Chris, while you're looking for that, if I may jump in, Mr. Warren, I believe we said that there are projects such as O'Alla and also Summit Park over in Catonsville that are not in the current F Y twenty two budget.
Are there plans to study that or look at that?
I know that the storm drain staff have met with residents from Summit Park to discuss the the curbing and the potential for installing storm drains. I don't know that they've got beyond the actual general estimate. So to my knowledge, they do not have it in the planning and design stage.
My next question is about the the school budget. We had a lot of questions when they presented to us, and they were going to get back to us with a plan as it related to renovation of Delaney and also Towson. I heard Towson in the that heard the change that they were going to wait for the study to be done on Towson. Was that also for Delaney?
Um, I would say if the planning board would like to recommend that Towson be studied for versus rebuild, I would, you could probably do the same thing for Delaney if you feel it's necessary.
So, so, but your recommendation was to do one, but not the other? I just want to understand what the recommendation was first.
Again, if I can jump in.
I'll say I was making the recommendation on the recommendation of my director.
So, so, Mr. Warren, you may recall that the county executive put planning money in last year's fiscal, last year's capital budget. And when Mr. Dixon spoke to the planning board, he, he basically indicated they've not done anything with Delaney. So money is already in the capital budget from last year to do some planning work at Delaney. If the recommendation here had to do with the conflict that was described about renovation or replacement, I think it's wholly appropriate for the board to also recommend that that be evaluated for Delaney to see if the recommendation of Cannon or the replacement is the better way to proceed.
Is that a motion we make now, or do we wait until that we're up for vote?
Jen?
You would make that now, so you would vote on the, on our staff recommendations? And you wanted to add any any like priority project or anything to our staff recommendations? You would add that to your vote and vote on that?
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion that we wait for both studies before we would enter into any contracts or start the construction of, of new school in Delaney or Towson.
So we add those to the comments, that's what you're asking, right? Todd?
Yeah, I, we're making a recommendation. I want to amend our recommendation to.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will do a roll call vote. That's easy. No, no, I'll do a roll call vote. I, if you.
An opportunity to discuss that before the vote's taken.
Oh, sure.
Sure, so I just want to express that, speaking on behalf, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of the Towson community, but Towson High School, the Board of Education voted to by seven to two margin. So again, a large margin to place replacement school back into the budget request. It's the oldest school in the county, and it's had the least capital investment in the last twenty two years, and it's the most overcrowded. And there's a clear need for replacement school here. The same goes for Delaney. The elected members of the school board who are accountable, again, to the people of the county, and it's not just the people representing District Five and District Three, it was a seven to two margin for places school. I would, I would suggest that we support their position and call for replacement school.
I appreciate your comments there, but we've just got a study that shows that Delaney is number six on the list of priorities, using a lot of things, a lot of metrics, and Towson is third. So for the good of the whole county, I find it very difficult to vote for replacing those two schools in front of the schools that are also on the list in need. So, you know, the school board has a job to do, we have a job to do, and I don't think it's fiscally responsible to build those two schools or recommend those two schools when the county as a whole has larger needs based on a report, and money has been put into the budget to study that and, and to evaluate a remodel versus a new school. I just, we have an equity problem in the county, and this will just add to that. And I just, I can't support that, so.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this issue? Yes, Kathy.
Could, could you, excuse me, could you repeat exactly what the motion?
Yes, that's my question.
The, the motion to wait until the studies are done on the feasibility of a remodel versus a new school before we improve, we, we recommend the funding of two new schools.
So, so in other words, he's saying that not to not do them, but to just get more information so everything is transparent. Right now, as we know, the school, there's a lot of reverberation in the back. The, the schools have been getting a lot of flack over transparency. So it's not to say we don't do them, but maybe since there's money for a study, it wouldn't hurt to study them so that we can say we did our due diligence. And at the end of the day, you know, money's going to be tight now with COVID. And so it might not hurt.
And in regards to the, I don't mean, in regards to the money point, the Maryland General Assembly just overrode Governor Hogan's veto of the Kerwin Bill, which in turn is going to allow for the release of significant funds for the Built to Learn Act, which will be available to the counties, including Baltimore County, to make these long overdue investments. When you have parents in Towson who have been promised for years that a new school is going to be coming around the corner, we have an opportunity to move forward on that rather than pushing the can further down the road. And again, I think that I'm simply voicing my opinion and the opinion that I've heard from parents in the community, that this is a top priority and it needs to be a top priority. I think to single those two schools out and say they should not be, we should not go for Board of Education recommendation is concerning.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't build the school, but if I was, if I was living in Sparrows Point right now, and I just got a report that says my school is number one on the list for overcrowded, for need for improvements, for equality, and you build a new school that's number six on the list, I got a huge problem with that. I mean, I, now, that's not my area, I'm on, I'm on the, I'm on the west side, but Catonsville is ahead of them. So how do I go to my constituents and say that? I also have Lansdowne, which is higher on the list. Lansdowne is going through the process of doing a remodel. So it's okay for us down here in the lower west side, the southwest side, to get a remodel and you to get a new school. You know, if they say we need a new school, I'll support that next year, but we got to do the study first. It just doesn't make sense, it's not equitable.
And Mr. Lafferty, am I correct in that they haven't completed the studies on the middle and the elementary schools yet? So we don't know what their complete needs are?
Right, absolutely, Nancy. They have really only begun the second phase, which is the elementary school and middle school assessment. And I think Chris made reference to this in his presentation, that since they've just begun and they're not expecting to have any answers till late summer, the order priorities may shift. That's why I thought it was reasonable to say, you know, we have a recommendation from Cannon to do a renovation at the same time the board wants to see a replacement. And as Mr. Warren suggested, it's, you know, let's evaluate which pathway and to include Delaney in that as well, even though Chris presented it was focused on Towson. But to include Delaney as well, knowing there was already money in last year's capital budget for the kind of planning that the county executive wanted to be undertaken. So I think the combination here would make it appropriate to follow Mr. Warren's recommendation. And that gives them more information, as you said, Nancy, to, that will help determine the next set of priorities.
Mr. Lafferty, appreciate.
And can I ask Steve or Henry? My understanding is that Towson High has landmark status. So how does that fact, how, how did that factor in school board's decision to replace the school? Or were they going to do with the old school?
I, I can't speak to the school board, Scott. I don't know, no, but you're absolutely right. It has a landmark status, and the county has never revoked a landmark status, and it also then impairs their ability to remove the building.
So I was just, and Henry, I don't know if you know, I mean, did the school board address that issue at all in their decision?
I'm not sure, Scott, what the conversation was from a debate standpoint. All I know is they voted to, to add back in that funding for a new school, or, you know, to begin the process for the new school.
Just want to give a little bit of perspective here. My son was at Towson High School when the last renovation happened. He's forty two now, and that kind of gives you some timeline. And the renovation then was not very good. And so basically, you know, it's way overdue for some sort of improvement and, as well as being woefully overcrowded. And the, the idea that it's going to expand by thirty three to fifty percent is a pretty big jump. But it's been a tug of war for the last several years of in and out of the budget for the last two administrations. And changing stream again is not, is not, is not good. So I would prefer to move forward and, and either do a decent renovation, but you know, that hasn't been decided yet, whether it's a replacement or a renovation, so. But it needs, it needs something, and we can't wait another couple of years.
Paul, I agree, and that's what I'm asking, is that study, is it a renovation or a new school? I mean, we should be able to get that study done within the year and move forward with that.
And, and, and I, may I add, if, being here from Towson, living here, working here, everything, I would love to rubber stamp it and go, let's make everything brand new. But what I would highly recommend because of transparency is that we do the study and we make it a top priority, that they get that going right away. That's one of the first things they start doing, so that way it can move forward. We know we did our due diligence.
Others have any thoughts, comments? If not, Todd, do you want to read your motion one more time, and then we'll do a roll call?
Yeah, I make the motion that we move forward with the studies prior to approving the construction of a new school at Delaney or Towson. I think it was in the minutes that Towson would be done as a study and not a new school, but I want to add Delaney to that. So I think that's the change that I want to make to the, to the, the staff's recommendation. Staff, can you confirm that I'm making the right motion there?
Um, yeah, so maybe the motion could be the C I P subcommittee accepts the staff recommendation for stage one, proposed fiscal year twenty two budget fiscal year twenty three through twenty seven program, with the addition to do a study on both Towson and Delaney High Schools to decide if a renovation or replacement of those schools is needed. With the addition to do a study on both Towson and Delaney High Schools to decide if a renovation or replacement of those schools is needed.
That, that sounds perfect. So that will be my motion.
Mr. Heckman, do you still second that?
We do.
Okay, I will now do a roll call vote. Mr. Schweitzer?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Uh, I think Mr. McGinnis still hasn't joined us. Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Heinle? Thought I saw Steve on. Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Steve, you're back? Steve, do you want to make a motion? Hear you. I'll come back. Uh, Mr. Fotus?
Aye.
The motion carries. We will hopefully get Mr. Holes' response when he's. Up or down. Can't, can't hear you, Steve. We'll come back to that.
Can I ask my last question?
Sure.
Uh, it, it has to do with the senior center in Woodlawn. Again, it's hard to understand completely and I apologize. Actually, they're recommending that. They're recommending they're going to do a study of the feasibility of a new senior center. Was that what I heard?
Yes, Mr. Warren, that's correct. So Woodlawn and Jacksonville, they're currently in the. Study phase to, to really look at the feasibility of both of those, those centers. So their property management's working with those communities. To see, you know, what, how that project can proceed in the future.
Okay, great. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Ms. Wolfson?
Thank you. Regarding Diamond Ridge, I see you, you've budgeted for design in the fall of twenty two, I mean, of the fall of this year. Will that design go out to bid or will that be an in-house design?
Um, I'm not too sure about that, but they did say that it was in the fiscal year twenty two budget for the designing construction.
And, and construction. So that these people who, I mean, this, this is a very neglected facility. Which sees a tremendous amount of use. So we're looking probably two years to completion before these repairs are made.
Yeah, this will be your.
I agree, Kathy, that, that, that park is used a lot, so.
Is there any way to accelerate this with an emergency measure? And draw funds from some dedicated to some other facility that isn't in its need of repair as this facility is? I mean, you can't even sit on the benches in this facility. To say nothing of achieve the hill where the pond is because the staircase is totally roped off. It's too dangerous to walk.
Ms. Wilson, I'll, I'll do a couple of things. First of all, the amount of money that's being provided to recreation and parks in this coming fiscal year. Regularly exceeds the money they have had in their, in their funds. Whether or not they have enough money to begin work before July one, which is when the new fiscal year starts. I mean, I'd be more than happy to raise that issue with the, the director, Rosalind Johnson. And also the need for accelerated effort. I, I don't know the extent to which they feel preparatory work, as it were, is necessary. FY twenty two, of course, goes from July one through June thirty of twenty two. But I will raise that with her to see if there's any way to get started now, at least in the planning and review and design stage. Before they actually start construction, but. I, I just don't know what the other pressing priorities are at this point in time, but I'll be more than happy to, to take that to the director and ask that, that be accelerated.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I mean, they're looking at a whole nother year of non-use at that facility at this point. So I don't know if we can make a motion to, you know. Make, make some accommodation to accelerate that design and implementation of the design to. Repair the facility. They're not even, we're not even asking for renovations. You know, we just want repairs and, and whatever's needed to make it safe to go there.
I think although the capital budget, sort of the transmittal letter deals with the upcoming capital budget. It's not inappropriate to add something into the transmittal letter asking that that kind of renovation or maintenance work take place earlier. So that's another, that's a venue that's very valuable for the planning board.
Thank you. Jennifer, is there something you would phrase for that?
Um, I guess for that, we would just add it to the last motion and say accelerate the design and repair of the Diamond Ridge Park.
And I would second that.
Any comments, questions about that?
No, but I think Wayne's been channeling Todd.
Again, I'll throw a roll call vote on, on this motion. Mr. Schweitzer?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
That was my dog. I apologize.
I think I will deny. Uh, Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinle? It's an aye. Uh, Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Fotus?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anyone else have comments, questions, concerns they want to raise at this point?
Yeah, I, I have a question here and this is about the, the school issue again. And I'm not sure if this is something which can be done or not, but to clarify that the recommendation as it pertains to any studies, that those be. Completed within a certain timeframe. I'm not sure if that's something we have the power to. Place into a recommendation or not. Again, this is my first go around on CIP. But I think that if we're going to be, as we've done, you know, again, if the staff recommendation is that Towson be. Examined for either a renovation or a replacement, and now we've added Delaney to that list. I think that there'd be some sense of the board that the. That the study be completed within a certain timeframe so that we don't have the same situation where it go, where we go through. Three or four different.
Mr. Caligari, like I mentioned in the past, that maybe we just put language in there that that's a top priority.
That would be, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if the amendment as offered included that, but I, if it didn't, then I would move that we. Make those studies a top priority.
I would second that.
I third, okay.
Anyone have a further discussion, clarifications about this request? Ask all those in favor indicate by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed, have the same likes? I don't see any, so motion carries. Further questions, comments?
Scott, I have a question. Going back to what Mr. Hartman. Is that me? Going back to what Mr. Hartman mentioned about senior centers and capital. I'm looking at the, for six years, I'm seeing three million dollars. And I presumably some of that three million dollars is for the studies that were discussed. Is that correct?
Anyone on planning staff want to address that?
Chris Davis, do you have any information or Jen?
Um, I'm reviewing it. Chris, did you see if that money was for. Designs or construction?
I'm taking a look right now. Let me see.
Thank you for that, Mr. Heckman. I wouldn't even have looked at that. We'd study it and have no money to build it.
Well, we don't have any, any money to repair roofs or anything. And I guess my greater question and maybe a point is with our increasing aging demographic. It seems to me like all our senior centers should probably be looked at. And it just seems to me that, you know, a million dollars here and there. Isn't, isn't for the next six years, isn't going to make any sort of impact. And what if we find in those studies that we do need to replace? There's no money in the next six years to even get that started. So. And I, I sort of recall, I guess it wasn't last year, but maybe the year before, there were a number of people that spoke up and I know Catonville. Was a couple, but I also think Perry Hall, wasn't, wasn't there a request from Perry Hall to look at their facility?
In their agency template, they do have it for design and construction for, well, for the Seven Oaks. Designing construction for the Woodlawn, the study starts in twenty three and it can, and completed in. Construction cost. So they do kind of go out with the construction cost in fiscal year twenty two. For the senior center. So it looks like it's two million for the Woodlawn Senior Center construction. And then Jacksonville, Jacksonville is two million. It looks like they did maybe the. Study in fiscal year twenty one.
So is. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
They do have construction cost in the, in the, out like a couple of years after, I guess, the, the design.
So is that up in the line item where it's, has new buildings, repair, renovations, minor additions?
If you go back to the, the agency template in the very, I think in the very back of your packet, there's agency templates where they filled out like. More information about all of their projects. Project list for two times. It gives like design dates and construction dates. It does look like they get some, maybe some grant money. For fifty percent of the.
Well, we have the final vote on this next week, don't we? It's not tonight. I mean, we're just making recommendations. We're moving it forward till next week. So, but, so if there's some information that people need, maybe we can gather it before that time. Is that correct, Mr. Lafferty?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we, this is the subcommittee vote, but if there's an item to be held for more detail. Certainly that can be obtained before March fourth.
Great. Thank you so much.
Well, I, I, is, is a motion required, Nancy? For that request for more detail?
Yeah, no, sir. I'll, I'll speak for you, Nancy. I'm not going to speak for Nancy. I'm not going to go there. No, Mr. Heckman, no motions needed. We will, we will track more, track down more information to answer your questions before we take the final vote.
Right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
This is the, another clarifying question. In regards to, and whether it's tonight or whether it's on the floor or next week. The vote, and again, this is the school issue and I hate to keep coming back to it, but. Is the vote on the budget as proposed by the board or is it on the staff recommendations? Just want to clarify here because there is obviously a slight divergence there as it relates to the issue of particularly Towson.
The subcommittee is making recommendations to the full board. So whatever is voted on tonight goes to the full board next week. And then those recommendations are forwarded, the full board's recommendations are forwarded on to the county executive with the transmittal letter. That includes the additional comments that you may want to make about any of the projects that are. Included or not included, or any things that want to be added.
Yeah. So then I'm going to move, I'll move, and this is, I know the results of it, to recommend that. As the previous vote was only on adding Delaney, that, that Towson be designated as a replacement.
But, but Henry, I think that may be hard just because of the landmark status.
And I understand that concern, but for the same token, my concern, Katie, is that. Once again, the, how long do we, how long is the study going to take? Are we looking at it being a year from now, two years from now? Then we got another CIP process. You have the issue of state funding. I think it needs to be a priority to move forward with replacement. And again. The replacement being done in concert with any sort of landmark rules and regulations.
Mr. Caligari, I think we've already voted on that, that we were moving that forward next week and then we were going to prioritize the study. So it wasn't. Waiting for a long time. It was prioritizing the study on the two schools.
My understanding on the vote was to essentially to add Delaney to the. List of being studied, not to study or not study Towson.
No, no, I think it was actually to accept the staff recommendation, which was to study whether Towson was to be a replacement or renovation. And then Mr. Warren added Delaney to that as well. So it's studying both schools. To evaluate renovation or replacement and then with your prior motion to make it a priority action.
Understood.
So, Henry, do you have a new motion or shall we hold on next week?
Well, I suppose simply, and I know the results of it, but I would move that, that the subcommittee mark. That replacement be a priority for Towson. And I know that kind of contradicts the prior one, but, and I know what the results will be, but I would still move that.
Do we have a second?
That's all right. I figured that as much. That's all right.
Other, that's okay. Other comments, questions, issues they want to brought up? Katie, do you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Henry, I understand what you're trying to do. It's just, I think because of the. Status, that, that's where you're going to, my issue with the.
No, I understand and I apologize for the confusion over that initial, Todd's initial motion and I. Fully understand the position of the board that we need to evaluate this thoroughly and I, I don't disagree with that. I simply will state for the record my position that. Is important that there be, for the sake of Towson at least, that replacement be made a priority. And I would agree with that Delaney should be as well. And my hope is that any study would reflect that.
Any other comments, issues?
Since Wayne's not. Since Wayne's not here, I feel like I gotta do it just for him. It's, it's only a great to do it. Uh, you know, the, he's asked for years. He's been on the planning board for, and I've been on for eight years and he's asked for a study of a gym at Hereford to add to the gym. We've heard from the community in the past about that. Uh, I, I would make a motion that we study the feasibility of adding a second gym to Hereford High School in honor of Wayne.
Second.
Motion, uh, has been made. Um, again, I, I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Nay.
Ms. Panero?
Nay.
Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Ms. Hafford?
It's, it's, it's the Hereford zone. It's a institution, their athletics up there. It's not just high school. It's their world. So, um, aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel? Nay. Uh, Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Fotus?
Aye.
The motion carries. I'm, I'm sure Mr. McGinnis will be, will be happy for this. Other comments, questions?
I, I know my sound is pretty bad, but I, I have to ask this question just because we've spent what seems like hours about talking about Towson and Delaney and it not being high up on the list. Just out of curiosity, where does Hereford High School's second gym fall on this, in the study? Was that even in the top 50 of priorities?
That, that, you make a good point, but, uh, again, he, there is a huge need in the community up there. It's been mentioned a lot. The cost of a new gym may be 2 million bucks versus 190 million bucks. So, you know, I mean, it, you know.
I can think of a lot of places.
Chris Weaver, do you see that on the list? Chris Weaver, do you see that on the list of all the, uh, capital projects or Jen?
I don't see it specifically anywhere on there.
Good.
And as I recall, when the school, when Mr. McGinnis raised this to the school board, to the school president. They had lots of other capital needs and that was not really on their list at the moment.
Yeah, I just think between the senior centers, the schools, um, you know, I, I don't doubt that they feel that they need a second gym. Um, I have two school age children that use the fields all over the county, all over the state. Uh, the gyms obviously are, are needed, but I think there is a, a lot better ways to spend 2, $3 million than another gym for Hereford High School.
And I totally agree. I mean, I just, I don't understand why that's such a high priority when we wouldn't, um, consider adding on a Towson, but we would give money to a gym that already has one. I mean, that's just my comment. I, I just don't understand why that's such an important.
Very true, but one thing that we've done in the past, um, I've been on the planning board for three years. We've gone around to the schools and, uh, so it really is an eye opener when you go visit schools all over the county and um, Hereford's just a different, it's a different beast up there. I'm not saying that they should do it. I, I know Wayne and he would love being on this planning board for this many years that, uh, Mr. Warren stood up for him because we put this in it for years and nothing's ever happened. Just saying.
But they're still part of Baltimore County, just like any other part of the county that might need. I live in the Essex area. I'm quite sure there are needs here. We're not giving $2 million for a school here. But if we're going to do that, then I think, you know, we, we're opening ourselves up to something that we may not want to do.
Anyone have any other comments? Motions they would like to make at this time? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the staff recommendations with the, um, motions and additions that have already been made.
I make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Schweitzer, that, um, please turn off your phone. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the capital budget and program accept the staff's recommendation with the changes that have been made for the FYI 2022 capital budget and program FYI 2023 dash 2027.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right?
Nay.
That was Mr. Johnson?
Aye, yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll include myself in that one. I put myself there too.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um.
This concludes the work session of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget Program. The final vote on the Capital Improvement Program will be scheduled for Thursday, March 4th at our regular planning board meeting. Information for the upcoming meeting can be found on the planning board's website. Thank you for attending tonight and this meeting will there be adjourned.
Everyone, thank you for planning.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, board members. Appreciate it.
Hey, Chris Davis? Chris? This is other Chris.
Yeah.
Stay on for a second?
Yeah, I'm, I'm off the line.